Mr. Van Leven, some indication of the plea.
Thank you for the day that has been given. I would like to thank you for Grayson County. Thank you for our board supervisors, servants, and faithful. Thank you for the citizens who have shown that they have an interest in what's going on in Grayson County. Great to be with our board members tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic, which is sacred, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would remind everyone of meeting the quorum. It's printed on the agenda. Please stick to that. At this time, any changes to the agenda or consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make some changes to the consent agenda. I'd like to take consent agenda item number three, budget amendments, and move that under new business. Final item under new business. And also, take out of new business, the access road contract approval and the further compensation approval, and put those under the consent agenda.
Okay, now have a second. I have a motion and a second, although in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm also aye. Okay, that brings us to our first public hearing. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into a public hearing to receive comments on special use permit for tax map number sixty-two dash A dash seventy-eight E and sixty-two A dash seventy-eight F. The proposed request is to establish a recreational primitive campground on both parcels. Sub move. Second. Have a motion and a second, although in favor signify by saying aye. Our first speaker, I'd remind everybody that you get three minutes. And if you would keep it to that three minutes, nothing worse than me having to stop you at three minutes and a half. Yeah.
You'll make a brief statement.
Please.
Thank you, members of the board. I will briefly summarize this particular special use permit that was provided to you in your board packet. It's kind of a brief summary among you, in addition to your staff report. So we reviewed, the planning commission reviewed this good one, other operator, Weary Ventures LLC's application for a special use permit regarding the property at sixty-two A seventy-eight E, sixty-two A seventy-eight F. The subject property is considered vacant, land zonal farm located in the Lexington district. This property is also in the White Top area and consists of approximately sixty-three acres on the two parcels. The zoning, as far as zoning compliance goes, a special use permit is required under the rural farm district for campground. And so that can be, that language can be found in section three dash eleven of the ordinance. A campground is defined as any lot or planned development for which three or more campsites are occupied and intended for occupancy by unrelated persons and intended for the accommodation of camping for periods overnight or longer. Additionally, three nine five one five, it regulates health, safety, and welfare uses and provides general requirements for specified uses to the campgrounds. During our review process, we consider impacts to the surrounding properties. They are noted here in the summary. There were things that we picked, that staff generally picked up. There could be the increased traffic into the neighborhood, additional vehicles, noise from camping, campers. The fire risk, which not managed properly, could pose a significant fire risk for adjacent properties into the residence. There's always the concern for trash and pollution, needing for proper facilities, trash buildup or pollution harming the environment, wear and tear on the roads, impacts with heavy vehicles leading into potholes, erosion, costly repairs, legal issues, complications that have risen over property rights and easement use between the landowners. Conflicts over maintenance of shared access, nothing has been finalized. Safety concerns for the adjoining residential development. There was concerns that we could potentially track transient population with increased risk of crime, vandalism, and other safety concerns. Additional foot traffic and unfamiliar faces can make residents feel uncomfortable in their own neighborhoods. Concerns for strain of resources of our local law enforcement and fire departments in the event of emergency. Decreased property value use should campground become known for its noise, traffic, and environmental issues could potentially decrease value, making it hard for residents to sell the homes. During the planning commission's meeting on the twenty-first, the public hearing, we had six residents speak briefly stating that of those six, they were all not, or opposed. And there was concerns for traffic along the right of way, lighting, trespassing, maintenance of the shared right of way, which was unknown, civil dispute of the right of way, fires, parking, illegal drug activity, trash, property depreciation, fire insurance rate increases, and unmanaged campground intimidation and threats. So basically, the recommendation, based on the Code of Virginia, the planning commission recommended the following, that the proposed use would have adverse impacts to the character of the neighborhood, the proposed use would have adverse impacts to shared access right of way used by all adjoining landowners, and the proposed use would have an adverse impact to the abiding property. Planning commission did make a motion by resolution, and that was a seven oh unanimous vote. And that resolution was read, it resolved that in order to assure compliance with Virginia Code, section fifteen point two dash twenty-two eighty-six A, three, and seven, the zoning ordinance, section one dash four, and three dash twelve. It is stated that the public purpose for which this resolution is initiated is to fulfill the requirements of public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice. A move that the special use permit request two zero two four zero zero six nine, as presented, be recommended for disapproval to the board of supervisors as the issuance of a special use permit would not be in compliance with Grayson County zoning ordinance. I will make a note, though, in the conclusion, based on the planning commission's findings and recommendation, this special use permit, it should be denied, but the board of supervisors here tonight does have the ability to deny, modify, approve the application as submitted. And so therefore, you know, if this board decides to deny, or modify, or approve, the planning staff will do as this board wishes, and we'll notify that the applicant by letter on behalf of this board. Is there any questions?
Thank you. We'll call us our first speaker, Dalton Woggins. If you would state your name and address, please, sir.
Name Dalton Woggins, one five eight one seven Highlands Parkway, White Top, Virginia. I'm against this campground. I live on that easement that she wanted to use. She had it surveyed Monday, didn't bother calling by telling it's coming. The paper says it's a roadway leading to that parcel of land, there's two different roads on my property, and she chose the one that she wanted best. It goes right through my bedroom window, these stakes right up against my bedroom window. She also told me that it's illegal for me to remove those stakes. There was twelve, directly through my yard. And I talked to a lawyer on Tuesday. He said that I could remove anything on that that I wanted to move, it was my property. I found out today that she went and filed misdemeanor charges on me for moving those stakes. She's been in some trouble since, since September when she bought that piece. She's drove me to man letters over a shovel and hand torch within that forty feet. It's nowhere in the right state, and that's an obstruction through forty feet. She told me she refuses to pay anything on road maintenance. She's moved on like it's already approved. She's been down there, had buildings delivered, brought people, or hired local help that she hires. Had Jim in there doing work, weed eating, moving buildings in, one of them pulling them seedlings. All her local help, hired local help that she hires has criminal backgrounds. One of them that moved her yards has criminal background, and him and her son was sentenced in prison. I don't, I don't want those kind of people running around my house, seeing what I got, where it's at, when I'm home, when I'm not at home. It's a big safety concern for me and much of the White Top community. The White Top community likes it like it is, they don't need to be developed. She's done nothing but harass and intimidate me since September. Drove me letters, text messages, dude of life has one of my little sin yell spells. Threatened to take me to court over shovel and hand torch. She's gonna have all fees waived for me to pay thirty-five hundred upfront, three hundred and fifty every year after that. Ten days in jail, she said I lose my job. She drove other neighbors' letters for the same thing, well, not exactly the same thing, but setting them up for pay, is how she works. She said she wouldn't let no designated parking spots. Her property is seven fifty, fifty-two feet off my back porch. I don't want people parking right at my back porch. She ain't gonna have, she ain't talking about no road maintenance, no privacy fences, nothing, no facilities, no messing. I just, I'm against it one hundred percent. It don't, it don't think happens yet, so they did right away from fifty-eight down to through that piece of property.
Thank you, Mr. Woggins. Next speaker is Gary Pennington.
Gary Pennington, one five seven nine three Highlands Parkway, White Top, Virginia. Ever since I've been proud of that, been nothing but harassed by it. And we don't need this in White Top. I live right at the land, of course, you won't put this thing. And I called a realtor and asked about what my value, what my property would be if it goes in. She put it like, yeah, she said, well, if it's you, would you buy your house where it would be? I said, no. She said, well, there you go, you'd have one hundred percent appreciation. I don't know, seems like she don't want to get along with her neighbors anymore. I mean, Paul Dalton, she's had him everywhere, which way it will lead. And anybody, and I'm including the people that done surveying, anybody put a stake up next to your bedroom window about four foot from the end of your house, there's something wrong with it. Lucky it wasn't me, because if it been me, I'd pull the stake up. Now, she goes down in there about two, three times a day. Most of it's just for harassment. And I don't know where she comes in with the forty foot right away, because that's going over on my cousin's part, her land. And she brought the land from my parents when it went up for sale, for taxes. I don't know, it just seems like she, she just don't want to get along with nobody. And it's not on the White Top, everywhere she's been, she didn't get along with anyone. Or if it's been Lanson, North Carolina, Florys, or where. And she's well known by Sheriff's Department out here. She does many bad things, cruel things to people, and connects. And I wish she'd just go ahead and sell the land back, or do what she ought to do, and move on. Now, if she wants campground, she got about forty-some acres where she lives. Better cut it in her front yard. She don't want that, but she wants it in somebody else's yard. I just can't understand it sometimes. Like I said, she don't, don't try to get along with her neighbors. She's very inconsiderate, I'll put it that way. That's all I've got to say. I hope you both will turn it down, because if you don't, it's gonna hurt property in White Top.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Ms. Vicki Pennington?
Vicki Pennington, one five seven three Highlands Parkway, White Top. There's a lot of things that I could say about this, but to make it short, for the recreational primitive campground together bothers me as far as not being organized like, like I think that it should be. And I'm very, very concerned about the fires. When you're talking about primitive, you know what that is, and you all, you know, can understand that. Yeah, there's gonna be a rule that there's no fires, but there will be. People will be down in there, and they will be, take something or do something, whether it's drugs, alcohol, or what, and they're not going to remember. Well, we can build a fire, she's not gonna be around, we can do whatever we want, camp wherever we want. And if it's brought in, there's gonna be a lot of things happen, and they're not going to be good things. They're gonna be bad things. And I think if, I can't say it being approved, and if you listen to what she said, and if you read her minutes, if it is approved, I recommend that she have liability, fire insurance on all of us, because it won't only get Gary's my house, it'll be him and Danny's, it'll get Dalton's, and it will get everyone surrounding, that whole mountain will be on fire. And it won't be just us. And bad things are going to happen, if it, you know, with the people, not, not with us, with the people, with the primitive campground. If that happens, it's gonna, there's gonna be a lot of bad things to happen, and I hope that you all can solve it. We have a good group, we have a family level settlement there, anyone would do anything for anybody. We don't have to call to go over to our friend's house or go down at Dalton's, you know. We won't, we do, they don't have to call and give permission to come to our house or come on our land, you know. And it won't be that way, but it scares me. And you better think of the consequences of what will happen, you know, if that happens. A lot of people are gonna be hurt, and White Top will be hurt by it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Pennington. Our next speaker is Diana Goodman.
Is this being recorded, video taped?
It is.
I'm Diana Goodman. I am the owner manager of Weary Ventures LLC that owns those three parcels, well, two parcels in question.
State your address real quick.
One four six seven nine Highlands Parkway, I live three minutes from the property. And full disclosure, I've been acquainted business-wise with Mitch, we're both realtors. But that's all. Did the members of the board supervisors get the email I sent? Did you all have a chance to read that with a copy of the planning commission?
We're not allowed to respond to you, so you just, you have your three minutes to speak.
I understand. Okay, that's fine. Okay, I'm gonna assume you did, if you haven't, please go read it, because it's very important. I'm gonna try to save some time. Okay, I didn't get my campground email, boo hoo, okay. But here's the issue, and I think if you go back and read the letter I sent to Jade and the planning commission after the meeting, you will see my concerns in depth. And in the email I wrote to you all with the attachment I sent back to the planning commission, here's what I wrote, addressed specifically to you all. I've expressed in that letter procedural ethical and potential legal concerns regarding their consideration and denial of the special use. This is not just me bemoaning the planning, the planning commission's recommendation, it's serious concerns that impact the integrity of the process. And I ask you to take a look at it. So very briefly, yes, I want my campground, okay? As a campground is a permitted use under current zoning. However, yes, I do need a special permit for three or more sites on the property, and it is primitive in nature at this time. However, I think a lot of the reasons, well, my biggest issue with the staff report was that it was wildly inaccurate. Everything, I think everything she mentioned in there that I hadn't included, including some mitigation kind of information, was in the packet right there on maps, drawn. I spent a lot of time on getting that information together. And also, the conversations during the planning commission, not just on the part of the speakers, the community speakers, but also on the part of the chairman, were inappropriate. I was threatened, I didn't threaten anyone. But I was threatened during, when I was trying to speak, and you'll see that in the YouTube video if you go back and watch it, and I quote it, I quote a word for word in the letter I wrote to the planning commission. I also want to point out that several matters are not admissible, and the chair even acknowledged that during the planning commission meeting, okay? So they're going back to back on this. There is an issue that involves somebody who did not have a title search done, unfortunately, who I've been in constant communication with, I think, over the last seven, eight months, trying to explain as a realtor and as a landowner how fortunately it works if you don't get a title search sometimes. There was destruction, unfortunately, on the last couple of days, damage done because of somebody not liking the survey stakes. I think some of the speculative concerns expressed by the parties at the planning commission and tonight, and they've gotten even more interesting tonight, are wild. I can't imagine drugs, what hippies, I didn't say hippies tonight, but might as well have naked people. I don't know, everything that you can think of is a would, would, would be, could, could.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. I don't, I'm not messing this up on you. Simone, Billings?
Sandra. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
My name is Sandra Villains. I work at, I mean, I live at two two four one Downing Road. A primitive campground in White Top is not needed. It will decrease the land value to several miles. There is a local campground up there, Creeper Trail Camp, Creeper Trail Campground is in White Top. It's off the way from other homes and properties. They offer food, hot showers, they allow animals and campfires, and it is monitored twenty-four seven by the people who own the campground. I'd like to talk just for a second about Damascus. Damascus is known as the finest town on the trail. However, what is also widely known is Tresl seventeen. It is widely known by the residents and law enforcement for the drug activity that is done there, even though they have law enforcement in town. Also, another issue there is transient hikers, the ones who stay for long periods of time. In Damascus, they have places to be housed. In White Top, we do not have places for a long-term hiker to be housed. And we do not have a regular presence of law enforcement in White Top. The location of the proposed campground is in a neighborhood where hikers could see the homeowners come and go on a regular basis. Ms. Goodman owns property right down the road from where she wants this primitive campground. Her property has its own private drive, it's all to itself. She could put the primitive campground down there and offer showers and hot food and whatever she wanted to, and could monitor it twenty-four seven. But maybe she doesn't want to decrease her land value, or she doesn't want to worry who is sleeping right outside her window with the smell of a porta potty. If she would put this on her own property, all of this could have been avoided. She stated that the campground that she's proposing would boost White Top's economy. I'm not sure how. She is offering the same rating as Creeper Trail Campground, who offers so much more than she does at this primitive campground. Campgrounds, even primitive, are meant to have fond memories and be fun. They aren't to be put among homes where homeowners have to worry about who's outside, where people that live on this mountain, we are there for peace and quiet. We pay more for gas and wear and tear on our vehicles just so we can have the peace and quiet. And everywhere in this room, if you will stop and think about it, you have a connection to White Top, whether it be food, bike rides, festivals, family reunions, or whatnot. Ms. Goodman said at the last meeting, there is nothing in White Top, but I'm here to say that there's plenty in White Top. Plenty of people that have concerns over this. I asked, one more, one more thing, I asked that the meeting be moved to White Top because White Top is full of elderly people who don't drive after dark.
Thank you. That's the last registered speaker. For the record, Ms. Linda. No, I've got six, and if you've got some, I just, I'd like to have them posted in a minute. I've got six emails here, all in opposition. I think it's, I think it's same. At this point, I would entertain a motion to come out of public hearing. A motion, second, although in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, we wait till new business to address this. That's correct, okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into a public hearing to receive public comments to consider amendments to the Grayson County Comprehensive Plan involving the adoption of utility-scale renewable energy policies. A motion and a second, although in favor signify by saying aye. Ms. Woggins?
Right, so, initially, has initiated by the Grayson County Board of Supervisors, going to be the scope, basically where we're at. By the Board of Supervisors on May the seventh, by resolution, the planning commission, with the assistance of the Berkeley Group, we do have Michael Zanger with us tonight, we made amendments to the Comprehensive Plan to provide for utility-scale wind and solar facilities, also identifying that utility-scale wind facilities are not appropriately used for the county. Additionally, identifying and abandoning the zoning ordinance to identify and regulate proper disposal methods for solar panels to minimize environmental impacts, establish an acreage limitation for utility-scale solar, preventing the overdevelopment, and prohibit utility-scale wind facilities as an allowed use, and further creating a mountain ridge overlay district to protect mountain top visualized for unsuitable development. The planning commission worked through these requests in several main meetings, as well as advertising and holding a public hearing on May twenty-first with the amendments before you tonight, minus the mountain ridge overlay. The planning commission felt that this request needed a thorough review and a discussion before submitting that particular piece to this board for consideration. Currently, the planning commission is working with the Berkeley Group at the next upcoming meeting on Tuesday night to address the ridge overlay. Again, we've got Mr. Michael Zanger with us from the Berkeley Group. If there's any questions from this board during public comment time, or just in addition from the board itself. Mr. Zanger presented to the board of supervisors with a brief synopsis of the changes, redlining and marking those in your board packet for your review. Does the board of supervisors have any questions for me before we enter the public comment?
This may be for Mr. Zanger also, I'm not sure, but in addition to him drafting this, I assume our county attorney has also reviewed the ordinance?
That he has. Prior to us... Prior to us amending all of it, yes. The modifications that we are just totally doing away with, the attorney has not, like when we struck the land use complete, he has not. But reviewed it prior to.
Ms. Black? We have two speakers, just remind you, three minutes each. Joe Bonacquisti.
Well, good evening, my name is Joe Bonacquisti, Allen 140 Kendrick, Martha Wilson. I want to thank the county supervisors and the planning commission for the pursuit of this current zoning ordinance for renewable energy, and I look forward to the ridge line ordinance, or I guess you call it the mountain ridge overlay, which will really be the teeth of the plan, when, and look forward to that when you and the planning commission break that up for the next month or two. Thank you.
Bevy Kofka. Did I hear that one wrong too, Bevy?
Yeah, you got it right, good job. Becky Kofka, 1785 sugar camplain, and unlike bubble gum on your shoe, I'm back. They're just, y'all did an amazing job with those documents, they're thorough and clear. And, but there are two little tiny sticking points that I just can't let go. Number one, 13-14 dot 3 dot 2, where you talk about yearly groundwater monitoring. My experience is maybe we have to tell them what they have to monitor for specifically, because I'm imagining they'll just stick a piece of nitrate testing strip and say, oh, your water's fine, and, you know, maybe we gotta be a little more literal with them. And number two, I was looking today at our local lunar landscape that used to be Buck Mountain, and what is the saddest thing that breaks your heart when you look at that? Yeah, the trees are gone, the animals, the birds, but what hurts me the most is that it used to be a haven for wild ginseng. So, I wonder if it would be feasible to make part of the application process to get a naturalist in, you know, where it is, wild woods, and do a plant survey. And at the very least, the Forest Service has a huge secret database of rare plants and where they are, and maybe that has to be part of the application process. So, all we do with that, thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. So, only two speakers I have, or anyone else that wants to speak? I know there's a lot of clipboards out there, so if we got it wrong. Okay? I just want to, now, I had an email from some folks, John and Olivia Bass in the Elk Creek Desert, in opposition to the wind. Can we make sure that gets in the record too, and send them out? Anything else, Mr. Anderson? At this time, I would entertain a motion to come out of public hearing. All those in favor, signify, I would say a no. Which board?
So, you asked me about the decision on the first public hearing, and I said, let's wait, we actually didn't put that in new business, thinking that we would go ahead and make that decision on that special use permit, so the group that was discussing it would go ahead and...
So, we can bring this up as we just, we need to dial this agenda in a little bit. Okay.
Well, you want to brief, based on the need to make a decision on whether to accept the planning commission's disapproval of special use permit?
That's going to require a motion to change, amend the agenda. If somebody will make that motion. Have a motion to second, all those in favor, signify, I would say a no. If I understand it correctly, we are now taking up the resolution on...
No, there's nothing in new business, that's what I'm saying. We did not have that in new business for some reason, I'm not sure. That's my fault, it was in business. Just a minute until now.
So, we, do we have the resolution in the, in the board packet?
Would not be a resolution. It would just be a recommendation.
Recommendation, accepted recommendation.
I'll entertain a motion from anybody on the board to either accept or deny the planning commission's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that be accept the planning commission's recommendation.
I have a motion in the second. Does this require a roll call, Mr. Anderson?
Sure.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Rash? Mr. Cornet? Ms. Thompson? I'm also, since we amended the agenda, was that to accommodate those votes from White Top when we get out of here?
We didn't have a new business, I heard her statement of driving them home, White Top, and I understand, and I wanted to, if we had, you said you wanted to make a decision on that, so I just wanted to wait.
Are we good with leaving the agenda the way it is? Go through these public hearings, and then go through the ordinance and resolutions remaining? Everybody good with that? We're out of closed session for that one. Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing to receive public comment to consider the adoption of Grayson County zoning ordinance concerning the regulation of solar energy and wind energy generating facilities, along with regulation and communication, regulation of communication towers, separate from towers associated with wind energy generating facilities, and to update procedures for consideration of special use permit. We have a motion in the second, we are now in, all those in favor, signify, I would say a no? I'm also, all right, we are in public hearing, Ms. Black, could you?
Again, Mr. Zager is with us, being able to address any concerns or comments about the amendments that were provided in the scope. Everything was redlined, and as you can see through the draft planning document that was provided in your packet, you will actually see, whereas the Grayson County Board of Supervisors has determined that utility-scale facilities are not considered to be inappropriately in use, the county given their potential impacts on adjacent and nearby uses, the county's natural resources are important, and shall be regarded. And there is some additional language that, I believe, in that May early joint meeting, Mr. Hash had identified that we needed to shore up the solar panel disposal. And I apologize, I looked ready for this one. It is actually been placed in there. Michael, you may have to jump in, so that we can identify this as part of that resolution.
How are y'all this evening? Um, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I feel like I...
So, we incorporated the disposal in a couple of places, under 3-14.3.3.9. As part of the decommissioning and reclamation plan, we added a subpart G that indicates that they have to, they have to submit a part of that anticipated plans for the disposal and or recycling of project equipment and components, including the identification of disposal and or recycling sites located in the county. And... It was already addressed in a couple of other locations, again, under decommissioning, and this is on page 25, under 3-14.3.6.10. That indicates that hazardous materials from the property shall be disposed of in accordance with federal and state law. And I believe that covers how that has been addressed.
The, thank you, Michael. The additional language that was added was for the percentage, and then that Mr. Cornet had addressed the planning commission in regards to it two times. We went back and forth on whether or not that would be a good fit, just because if you done it two times, and you got a million dollar project, you're going to count several million dollars that would need to be applied for, which would potentially preclude any solar within the county. So, we came up with, and hopefully you will agree, that we added on page 25...
We don't have a page number, homeowners, can you give us the reference of?
I'm sorry.
3 dash, 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 dash.
All right, so it's 3-14.3.6.10, just kind of, we're just at, I'm so sorry, you don't have page numbers. And that's going to reference, everybody get there, 3 dash, okay. And then go to H and drop down to numeral, on the numeral 3. The amount of funds required to be deposited in the escrow account shall be the full amount of the estimated decommissioning cost without regards to the possibility of salvage value plus 10%. Kind of back and forth on it for a while now. Go ahead.
My apologies, I did also want to add that with respect to disposal or damaged panels, we did add 3-14.3.6.6, which covers during the operation period, damaged panels and storage. It indicates that all physically damaged panels and or portion, or any portion or degree thereof shall be collected by the facility operator, renewed from the site, or stored on site and in location protected from weather and wildlife, and from any contact with ground or water until removal from the site can be arranged. Storage of damaged panels or portion or debris thereof shall not exceed 30 days beyond any required period of insurance, warranty claim or in the event of force majeure, for which reasonable documentation shall be submitted to and approved by the zoning administrator. And then it has some other provision about force majeure.
And again, we're still working on that ridge overlay, really wanting to do a little more on what that's going to entail. So, we do have language already ready for the planning commission to start reviewing next Tuesday night, all good. And I also want to make that a note out to the general public, those meetings are always open sessions, we're able to come and visit and listen in part, as from the planning commission, so. Those were the items that the board of supervisors wanted us to address. Is there any more questions for me or Mr. Zager?
I just have, I have one, in, in light of one of our citizens' comments about the groundwater monitoring, is there any way to include that language that was suggested, or is that something that, that's decided?
It would be at your discretion if the board of supervisors wants us to add that as part of the adoption process tonight. We could do that, but we need to kind of know what way you're wanting us to go here. Formulate, formulate your suggestion as to how we need, what we need to include.
Yeah, and I would just add, in my opinion, so, this is fairly standard language that we propose, and I think the, the way the language is written, it gives the county the flexibility and discretion to indicate through the administration how the groundwater monitoring is, is to be conducted by the, by the property owner, by the facility owner. You know, if they conduct groundwater monitoring and, and testing, and it's not, to a degree, that the county finds responsive to the requirement, then, then I believe they have the ability to require alternative or additional testing. So, I think, I would suggest that it not be overly specific, but that it gives you the ability to dictate what the monitoring would be at that point in time.
And that would be through a special use permit condition?
And that's true, and it could also be addressed more specifically through a special permit condition, if you, if the county wished.
I've got a question. All of this, the, the board of supervisors can still grant permits that are special used beyond some of these requirements, that's, the ordinance is set in stone, but, but the board of supervisors can circumvent that and allow variances within that ordinance if the special use permit comes up that...
If you saw fit that something you thought needed to have a little more, you know, guidance or...
Or less guidance?
Or less guidance. Am I correct in saying that, Michael? They have that discretion?
Yeah, well, so there's a couple of ways that an applicant can pursue that, they could seek a variance, or, let me just double check something. So, the zoning administrator can waive certain elements of the impact assessments that are required for the application. There's some other requirements that can be waived, for instance, distance requirements and the like, that can be expressly waived by the board. And then buffering requirements, those can be waived, but signing agreement for solar facilities gives the supervisor fairly broad latitude to be able to waive requirements as well through the signing agreement process. So, if you were presented with a project that you view as beneficial to the county in all different ways, you can certainly consider waiving components of the requirements if you felt like there was a need to do that.
Thank you.
That language is 3-14.312.7.
No, I'm good, I think that was a good explanation.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Black, appreciate it. I have one speaker. Does anybody want to speak on this that did not click or not? All right, watch this. Denby Bonacquisti.
We just keep showing up to you, right? I'm Denby Bonacquisti, I live at 140 Kendrick, Martha Wilson, and I just came to say thank you, because I know sometimes I've been, well, you always say that I'm getting your email boxes, and I've appreciated learning all the process, and I just wanted to thank you, and also say I can't stand to run the process out of the door. And looking forward to the ridge line ordinance and seeing how we can get this buttoned up. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to come out of public hearing. Second. A motion in the second, all those in favor, signify, I would say a no. I'm also out. Okay. Everybody good, read brief? Can we get to another public hearing? Wait, let's get to more board. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing to receive public comments to consider changes to Chapter 7 Transportation of Grayson County Comprehensive Plan, which include adding the required project information and maps to the transportation chapter to support DDOT smart scale project for Skyline Highway, that's Route 89, at Mount Bell Road, Route 168, right turn lane improvement. A motion in the second, all those in favor, signify, I would say a no. We have no public, we have no red speakers, none of them. Okay. Do you need to get anything on this? I think, I think we're good on this. I think, I think we're good on this.
I mean, we, we.
Okay. Alright, this time I'd entertain a motion to come out of public hearing. Second. Motion second. All those in favor, signify the same. You got one more in you, and then we'll break before you?
Yeah, that would be good. One more is about it.
Alright, at this time I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing to receive public comment to consider the adoption of Grayson County Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance. And accordance with chapter sixty-eight and seven five eight of the Acts of Assembly, these acts. Referred to as the Consolidation Bill, combine stormwater management and erosion and sediment control requirements under the Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Act.
So move.
You mind second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in the second. All those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Um, we talked with Jada about this. Dendy Bonacquisti?
Yeah. Dendy Bonacquisti, one forty Kendrick Malcolm Wilson, and um, this kind of came out of the blue, and I'm just curious. I have a lot of questions about it. I read through it. There were a lot of cross-references to all kinds of codes that led to other codes, and I had, would have had it had like five or six different books opened at one time to know what was going on. What is going on? What is this about? With the winter vibes, it was easy enough to know. We had an issue arise that we needed to deal with it. Did something happen? Um, is this in relation to um impermeable surfaces and solar panels? I don't know, but I'd like to know if, if there's a, a process, an informational need. Would there be something like that?
If, if you would allow us to come out of public hearing, we'll address that.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, uh, entertain a motion to come out of public hearing. So move.
Seven.
Motion in the second. All those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
This is simply updating our stormwater policy based on Virginia code. It's, it's just a procedural thing that we have to do.
Okay.
To make our, you go ahead and help me here, make sure our stormwater and erosion plan matches the state code.
Yes, so the State Water Control Board uh has updated to consolidate stormwater and erosion and sediment control. And we are required that we have to have this erosion and sediment control ordinance adopted by July first.
Is that because we're dealing? Is that because we're dealing role or?
Well, we are dealing role, and so by ordinance, we, we've got to be able to, we have to hold public hearing, got to have the comments and such. But yes, I mean, we don't have a choice. So it kind of comes down the pipeline. We've got a policy.
We tried to put this, we tried to put this in the concern agenda, and now I realize that we can't. It has to be. So it's, it's a procedural thing that we have to do.
But Cindy, I have that um Virginia Department of Environmental Qualities. More than glad to share that with you. It's a letter that explains why we are doing what we're doing. You're very welcome. Thank you, Tom.
Alright, uh, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll get into new business. Appreciate the paranoia, it does get.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm.
No, you're good. Yeah, you're good. It's great.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah, Harry. Yeah, it's good.
I'd like to see Kendrick Malcolm Wilson.
Yes.
That's such a pretty place. Me, I love it.
Yeah.
Joyce, I got your notice. Uh, did you find anybody who was going to the county?
No, and I didn't have time. There was too much going on, but I'm gonna, I need to, you know, make another donation, get the arts.
I just found this on my, probably the. I, I saw some stuff.
Did you really?
Maybe there. It was.
I thought, I understand the beauty of you. I think you're a great person.
I saw him in his up there.
Okay.
Yeah, it was off broad, my first.
Right.
And now it's.
Oh.
They are. I was like, hey. And.
I jumped over my own feet.
And I was a woman, including the woman who played president.
Really? That's great.
I haven't heard of it.
Yeah, it's. Oh, of course.
Very.
Cindy, I'm.
I.
Do you know, I'm reading.
I've never heard of.
She is around. What is happening?
I think she just.
My strong.
Those are the show.
This is so weird. Oh. I didn't say she was. Wow. Yeah. Well, I'm. I'm. That's more the. She's. But she has. As for that. I live with my. Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
But actually, so.
Wow.
And there were, there were two women. His. I think they said mother and daughter, and they were tested. All the rain. They're about to just take a picture.
He gets the rest of the.
Oh, no.
They're supposed to be. Um, right. This is. Ah, I'm. And I'm. I've never heard of. And wondering if, if this is part of that. What is it? But they were. I think. That's what I'm saying. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm like. No, did you? I'm not. I just went and. Everybody else. How long have you been there? Uh. Hello. Man, she was. I was just thinking. And she's. Hello. He said land was, it's the size of. It's not helping out. Our population was. Well, yeah. I was so good. All the. I'm a. Second.
You look okay?
Okay. Well, yeah. How there is it? We're in the Jeep pants, uh, golfing car. Where I stranded out was from a very. And you're. That's okay.
Excuse me. Yeah. Charge like any of these stuff, like hooking the monitor, helping it, turning it on and off, things like that?
Yeah.
Okay. Y'all routinely turn that off during meetings, or is it just?
If it's an expected big meeting, so like we, we had so much public comment, we expected there to be a, a big turnout, so I turned it on out there, but nobody shows. I just turned it off just now.
I noticed it was on today, it's been on out there at times.
Yeah, it just depends on how we expect the turnout to be.
There's been enough. Your spectators. Did I just act like this? Thank you. You have fair spirits with us. See you. I mean, you know. But if I, if I can hold the. What, what else? Uh, I have. Plan Commission. Physical. Hello, or? I think that really didn't go back. And not just make it so gray, because it leaves it. And I'm bad. Just, you know, it was. That. And I bet he does. She calls to pick up. She's Oriana. That's not bad.
Alright, ladies, back in order. We are done with public hearings. We're moving on with new business. Um. I guess the first, uh, and we probably need to read this one, Mr. Boyer, uh, resolution for comprehensive plan amendment. Okay. Jada, you want to read it? I got it.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, this is a resolution adopt in the utility scale. Uh, renewable facilities policies, comprehensive plan then. Whereas under section fifteen point two dash two two nine of Virginia Code, the board of county supervisors may consider amendments to the comprehensive plan. And whereas section fifteen point two, two two three O of Virginia Code requires a review of the comprehensive plan every five years, determine whether it needs to be amended. And whereas due to the increase in renewable facilities, permanent applications change to state law and increased management. Generation facilities, there is a need to update the comprehensive plan. Whereas on May seventh, twenty twenty four. Um, sorry, May seventh, twenty twenty four, the board of county supervisors initiated amendment to the comprehensive plan to address utilities scale renewable energy facilities. And whereas intent is to provide policies and a development vision, showing how the county may utilize its land resources to accommodate the increase in utility scale renewable energy generation facilities. And whereas the planning commission held a public hearing on May twenty first, twenty twenty four after notice and according to section fifteen point two, that's two two four. Code Virginia heard citizen testimony regarding proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan. And whereas the planning commission by resolution found that both amendments to the comprehensive plan, guides and accomplices, coordinated adjustment on this. Development of the territory, which will, of course, would present improbable future needs and resources best promote the health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare. Of the inhabitants, including the elderly and persons with disabilities, now therefore be resolved. The Grayson County Board of Supervisors does hereby adopt comprehensive plan amendment to scale renewable energy facilities policies. Task year two to be incorporated to the comprehensive plan and referenced to the table of contents thereof. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution. So look. Second. I have a motion in the second and discussion.
I think we, we pretty much made this voice quite a bit. I hate not having some type of discussion, but uh. About out of, out of it right now.
Well, I, I've got to say, I, I struggle with this one a little bit because we uh. We're taking away property rights, and we're picking winners and losers. And it may be. Wind generating farms right now. It could be a goat farm ten years from now, and I just, I struggle with taking away the ability of a landowner to do what they want to do on their land. However. In hearing from everybody in the county, we at least need to put some guardrails around it so the county can have some regulation. On things that are coming up that we didn't think about twenty years ago. Um. So personally, I feel like we need to have some type of regulation, but I really struggle with the thought of taking away somebody's property rights by not allowing. Them the right to do on their property what, what they want to. But so anyway, that's all I'll say. I just want that on the record.
I, I agree. I agree that, I got to get my microphone. We've had several of those conversations, you and I, and some of the others. Um, and that, that has been the struggle because initially, uh, you know, until we got deep into this and considering some of the, the issues and listening to the, the community, I, I was leaning a different direction. So I appreciate uh that, Bradley.
Yeah, uh, same thing both of these guys were saying, but at the end of the day, it's not about us personally, it's about record and the people. That's what we're trying to do here.
It's not to put a pin on the record too, but uh. I am a very strong uh holder of people's rights to use their property as they wish, if they have, but. I think we've heard openly, gladly. Strong resistance from the sister county. To this, and we kind of found out that if you have some flexibility, show a project that we think's fit for the county that uh is a good fit for it. Use that some flexibility or future holds flexibility to uh maybe weigh in certain. Parts of the ordinance or comprehensive plan that outweigh it, so.
I just reiterate everything. As they've already said, property rights are extremely important to me as well, and I think everyone knows that, but. I just really appreciate all the work that's been put into this. It was extensive, and I thank all of our citizens for actually letting us know how they feel. Really.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? This is a resolution that required a roll call vote. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ash?
Aye.
Mr. Cornet?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
I'm also aye. Okay, next item of business is an ordinance. Um, it's only ordinance amendment for renewable energy procedures. I think um. We're well aware of where we are on this, so if you can, if you can raise any, any grievance, just. For the record, Ms. Black, we do, this board has the ability to offer variances for anything just, and this can be changed moving forward.
The board supervisors can address our resolutions, write a motion to make. Suggest.
Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion uh to adopt or not to adopt the ordinance.
Okay. To adopt.
Second. We have a motion in the second and discussion. Here, none of those in favor? This doesn't have to be a roll call vote. It is a roll call for them. Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ash?
Aye.
Mr. Cornet?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
I'm also aye.
Uh, next thing on the agenda is a resolution, comprehensive plan amendment, chapter seven, smart scale round six, transportation. Uh, unless there's an objection, uh, waive the reading of that resolution. Uh, so this.
Everybody. Good with that?
So I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution to the comprehensive plan amendment. Chapter seven, smart scale round six, transportation. So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those, ah, this is a resolution. Roll call vote. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ash?
Aye.
I know, Mr. Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Okay. Um. Mr. Chairman? You got a vote. You got a vote. I'm also aye. Uh, next item of business is an ordinance for the erosion and sediment control program. Uh, simply that adopting an ordinance that mirrors what the state says we have to have. This time I would entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion in the second and just gonna get this a little bit. After reading through the ordinance, I was a little confused, I think, like everybody else, but uh. I was a little concerned with the timeframes, but Ms. Black has assured me that here we do better than the forty-five days. We can usually do it within a week, so I think that's a good thing. Thank you. Anybody else? We have a motion. Okay, we have a motion in the second. This is an ordinance, so it requires a roll call vote. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ash?
Aye.
Mr. Cornet?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson? I'm also aye. Uh, we move the county access road to consent agenda. Uh, resolution, casino gaming tax usage. Mr. Boyer?
Yeah, you just have to designate where the casino gaming tax.
Yeah, you just have to designate where the casino gaming tax proceeds usage will go, where funding will go. And if you look, uh, in the line, it says, uh, the tax proceeds will go to public safety, specifically provision of emergency medical or fire services as budgeted fiscal year twenty twenty five.
Is this a resolution that we have to do every year?
Every year.
Every year. And those are guardrails around that set forth by the Commonwealth, correct?
Well.
Rest of the.
So, casino, yeah.
Man, it's limited to where we can do it, and we choose all three of them in this resolution, am I correct? Okay. Um, everybody waving the reading of the resolution. I'll consider a motion or entertain a motion to consider the resolution for casino gaming tax usage.
So, move. Second.
I have a, I have a first and a second and a discussion. All the roll call vote, Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ash?
Aye.
Mr. Cornet?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Chair is also aye. Um, amendment to local holiday schedule that's to adopt the state policy, I think we had a chance to talk about that.
It's just, we got the email from the judicial council, uh, they have authority to determine in certain courts, I'll be able to, for Virginia, and they met this week, last week I guess, and they, uh, added, uh, some days off for the judicial courts. This is usually, uh, the board can choose to adopt these days, modify these days, or.
This is a specific request from the judicial?
Oh, that's where it comes from.
From the judge?
That's right.
I'll put it with the judge. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the resolution for the local holiday schedule suggested by the judicial?
So, move. Make sure the judge knows he did that.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. All those in, never mind. Mr. Cornet?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ash?
Aye.
I'm also aye.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the budget for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five.
Sir, so you have the resolution in front of you, we've, uh, updated the budget, um, uh, to the most recent numbers that we have, and this is a resolution adopt the budget for county aggression fiscal year, uh, July twenty one, twenty fourth, June thirty, twenty twenty five, incorporating funds for all kind of play expenses of the county for fiscal year, plus the latest on all real estate, personal property, machinery, tools, merchants capital, and all of levies and fees that previously imposed or modified by the board.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the county budget.
So move. Second.
Got a motion and a second and discussion.
Yeah, so, in, in this, in this budget, I, I would like to commend the staff. You guys have worked really hard, because we, we've said all along, cut, 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 to get this thing down, and it's not been popular, I understand, in, in the courthouse. And, uh, so I really do appreciate the work that's gone into this. I was a little reluctant initially because we do have the increase, uh, two dollar month increase in, in the trash fee, but I, I think that's justified, uh, but I really appreciate the work and, and how you guys have trimmed this thing down, I know we've got a lot more work to do ahead, uh, next year. And, and you, you folks, this is your first official budget, so kudos, I think you've done a really good job. And, um, we just, we want to keep moving in that direction and be as frugal with taxpayer dollars as we can, and I appreciate that.
Same thing, staff, for all your hard work, uh, I'm, I'm never a fan of anything going up, but I understand the trash fee. We were, Steve and Nick, you took a lot of darts for us, and we appreciate that, because a lot of people don't want to make the hard decisions. A lot of people rather just increase on the citizens and, uh, not have the hard conversations, but I appreciate that. The two dollar increase on the trash fee, uh, I know the tipping fees will be going up in the next few years sometime, hopefully this increase will allow us to absorb that and not have another increase, hopefully this will get us set in a pretty good direction. And I really think the county is on a pretty good tra- trajectory right now, better than a couple of years ago in my opinion. Uh, we still got a lot of work to do, but for every day, George. I think we, we worked as a board really well for this, this budget and, uh, it's, it's nice to be able not to have to raise the levy, but just, we, we raised just a minimal amount on some of the services. Um, all of the departments have been cut, nobody's happy. Um, I think we're going to have some hard decisions in the coming years, because we're, we're, we're flat right now, and if, if we're flat, we're kind of moving backwards. Um, it's amazing what this county can do on the budget it has, and I want to commend, yeah, keep Ms. Lyndon mentioning, Steve, thank y'all for all the hard work that y'all put into this budget. And I want to also thank the board for working through these issues, I think we, we came to a good calling ground and didn't impart, uh, a lot of pain over the rest. Uh, I just ask that, whenever we approve the budget, can we, can we post that on our website if possible, and hopefully even the Facebook page once it's adopted, please? Mr. Boyer, I know we, uh, appropriated some money to fix our website, are we in, are we moving forward with that?
Yes, sir. Well, uh, just had our initial first meeting with the website, um, development, we're, uh, we'll have to transfer all our old data over to the new webs, uh, to the new data, onto the new website, we're designing, we're looking at images, logos, and seals to make sure we're all correct. And then we're just talking about this today, it'd be great to be able to post this online, uh, prior to meetings, so people can just go on our website and go, okay, everything's right here, it's either credible and usable, so, uh, hopefully we'll have this all wrapped up in the next three, four months.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any more discussion? Alright. We got a motion and a second, Mr. Anderson?
Roll call vote?
Yeah.
Aye.
Mr. Ash?
Aye.
Mr. Cornet?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
I'm also aye, that's, I, I thank all y'all for the work that you put in there. Okay, uh, next thing is we need to set a date for the network authority meeting, date and time?
Yes, sir.
We have one more.
No more? Oh, never mind, right after that. Right after, you want to do that now?
No, let's do the network authority, I'm sorry, I got a lot.
Okay. Um, you just, you need us to, you got any suggestions, or you want us to just?
We give you two, we give you a couple of options, uh, June twentieth, four to five P M, or Thursday, June twenty seventh, four to five P M, we need arguments.
How long does this go take, you know?
Uh, I think we can knock it down and, we got Mr. Rebels come in, so there'll be some extra messages. Uh, you know, we're kicked off this project and, uh, there's a lot, you probably don't realize how much work's going into, uh, planning, scheduling, uh, everything that's happening with between, uh, Port Lookout, Palm Mountain, uh.
Just out of curiosity, this does need to be a special call meeting, we couldn't do it before the next board meeting in G Y?
No.
Timeframe?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so what were the, what were the options?
We threw out, uh, the twentieth at four to five P M, or the twenty seventh at four to five P M.
I mean, the library board, June twentieth, four o'clock.
Twenty seventh would work better for me.
I'm good for the twenty seventh.
I'm good for the twenty seventh.
Okay.
We'll hopefully knock it out thirty minutes.
At four?
Four o'clock.
Can we do four?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Right, you say yes?
Twenty seventh at four o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Everybody, give it up.
They have a question, though?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Or, great. Not, not you?
No, I'm good.
Yeah.
I've kind of been talking to my husband.
Okay. Okay, moving on, uh, the next thing on, uh, last thing on new business is we pull budget amendments out of the consent agenda, uh, Mr. Anderson, report your.
Okay, well, I, I do, I talked with staff quite a bit today on these budget amendments, and I think I'm got that dog here, here, if I can probably. So, I, I, I thought it would be incumbent upon us as a board to discuss these, uh, these adjustments, and the, uh, there was some unanticipated revenue, when the citizens get our board packet, they get it the same day we do, so they probably got some of the same questions. Uh, so we see, uh, we see, we saw some unanticipated revenue in, uh, tourism, V S S, comprehensive services, and, uh, I did get opportunity to talk to the V S S director on the way in, so that was, it was a good conversation, so those, uh, not, not real issues with, with that, and that's just under the threshold of acquiring a public hearing on those. Um, the, the adjustments down here into the expenditures, um, we have several folks that are over budget, several departments I should say, that are over budget or projected to be over budget in the, uh, in this current fiscal year. And I got some pretty good explanations, but I want to run through those for, for the record, if could. Um, so the, the magistrate, um, we're looking at, uh, a five hundred dollar deficit on what I understand is like a fifteen hundred dollar budget. And I'll tie some of these together this year for the sake of time, the magistrate, um, and the juvenile court, tho- those are things that's, it's hard to project because you don't know how much, how long it's going to be, so I understand, and there could be some, some unforeseen things coming up in those. Emergency operations?
Let me just interject.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I don't want the magistrate's office because I did find out that they had a catastrophic phone issue, and it's all in telecommunications, at one point they couldn't receive calls or fax anything out. So the five hundred dollars is attributable to that catastrophic phone issue.
Okay. Excellent. If, and if you want to just take over there, that's fine, that, that way I don't have to. But, um, you know, I, I question you guys pretty extensive, because in our packet, it shows that you have, your office had a twenty five thousand dollar, uh, over budget, and I know we've talked about a good explanation on that, but I'll let you take over.
Okay, that'll be fine. Um, for county admin, typically at the end of June, historically, there's been, uh, an entry to reclass salaries for one person who's being charged to county admin, um, and into the broadband funds. So that, um, after doing some research today, equates to about thirty three thousand dollars, which will take care of the, the ocean. But also, um, during the research of the past few days, since we've been getting questions, there's also every class of grant services, apparently, um, there's, oh, no, no, there's, um, grant charges that are being charged to us when it maybe is attributable to a different department. And, um, we got, I have the calculation on that of about fifteen thousand dollars that needs to be reclassed to, some of it's to E D A, some of it's to other, you know, tourism, so.
So, so, so are these things were actually in the wrong categories?
Yes. Um, I'm, I'm going to skip down to emergency operations, in that budget, we originally had the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the fire truck in our path, and when the board changed the nature of that payment to go to the fire departments themselves, it no longer qualified. So that money came out of the emergency operations budget, which was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and emergency operations is, is only estimated to be, um, over by about three hundred. And keep in mind, these are all estimates, because we still have things that are coming out until the end of June. So this is what the estimate, they may be over, it may be less, very well could be less, hopefully it's not more. We're trying to get it really close.
One, one question.
Mm-hmm.
And you may not have that information out there, but under the Galax Grayson E M S, does a true up at the end of the year, do you have that information on what that was?
Yes. We've actually already paid it.
And was it in this lineup as well?
It was in that category, yes.
So was it, was it a pretty small amount at the last board meeting, it seemed like it wasn't a small amount?
Seventy, was it a seventy four thousand?
I was thinking seventy eight.
Okay, yes.
Did they not think it was going to be a small number? Wouldn't that make you?
They did.
Am I hearing the fourth quarter payment? It was harder than what they called it, the true up itself, or not half, I'm sure, or better than, and we think that, we, we, uh, the whole way. That's nothing.
The third quarter payment for Galax Grayson E M S was about thirty seven thousand, so. It was higher.
Thank you.
Um, juvenile court, uh, they are over based on utilization, there's no way to, um, actually know how, how many days we're going to be billed for, for juvenile detention.
It's costly to go, let's see.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Um, refuse collection, I did take the opportunity to look at all of the budgets that Jonathan oversees in public works, and there are some savings in the tipping piece for that, so I do think that it's going to offset each other, um, so I think refuse was seventy thousand, and he's going to end up with, uh, about a hundred thousand dollars left over in disposal in that budget. Um, the treasurer's department is over, I'm estimating will be over by twenty five thousand, um, because once we get to the end of the year and we combine all the funds that, that go into the general fund, the treasurer actually purchased some supplies out of fund six oh seven, which, um, didn't have a budget or the amount in it. So what that means is, once we combine that into the treasurer's department budget in fund one hundred, it's potentially going to put that budget over at the D M B payouts fund. Parks, uh, detail kind of what happened in the parks budget. Matthews State Park is part of the parks budget, the county parks budget, and what happens is they put in the amount of the payment from the Matthews Foundation in that surty bond, line item of sixty thousand, but the agreement with, uh, the county and Matthews State Park is that we are going to fund the fridges, the county. That element was missed, so there's about, I want to say there's about nine thousand dollars that the Matthews Park is over of the surty bond, so that's really not attributable to the county parks and rent. Good, oh, sorry. Um, and I also will say that pool concessions and supplies were running over significantly, and I do believe with the utilization of the pool has, um, exploded, and their revenue is much, much higher as well. So what's happening is people are going, they're buying concessions and having to replenish them quicker than they normally would have, but the revenue is also, um, will offset that.
Nope. Nope.
Yeah, that's what I'm understanding, it's a very, very busy. Um, we have had extensive conversations with the sheriff's department today regarding our overages, that's why I left it for last. Because I wanted to go over a few items with the pool. And I wanted to cover and highlight one other thing. So with these budget amendments, they're usually done in your closeout meeting at the end of June, not in an actual board meeting, so these typically happen, it's just later in the month. I wanted to look at, because even I think, um, Supervisor Corran brought up in one of the budget meetings, you know, why is it that our, we budget to use fund balance and then we don't have to? So currently, in our general fund, we have about, uh, twenty eight million dollars in revenue, okay, through mid-June. We're going to receive a lot of the state funding that we get at the end of June. And our current expenses are twenty eight million. The difference being about seventy two thousand, we're in a seventy two thousand dollar shortfall right now for general fund. Um, and we budgeted one point nine million dollars in carryover funds to use to balance the budget at the beginning or at the end of last year, beginning of this year. or at the end of last year, beginning of this year. So while we are having some overages, we're, we're, it is my estimation that we are gonna end up with a surplus and not using carryover funds. Now, once we combine all those funds that may come to be in the financial budget, I've looked at all of them and I'm pretty sure about that. So I wanted to just basically say, while there are overages in some departments, it's not putting our general fund in a, in a catastrophic situation. When talking to, um, the sheriff's department today, they're gonna, they can't close out their S R O, S R O grants until the end of June. So what that means is they're gonna receive about another fifty thousand dollars in revenue for the S R O officers. They need to speak around the end of June. And also, there were eight vehicle accidents that we received insurance recoveries on, which were, didn't get reflected in the sheriff's department budget, we received the revenue, but their budgeted expense didn't go up, and that equated to thirty-eight thousand. So now we're at, we're, we're at about eighty-eight thousand dollars. Is there anything you'd wanted to ask, Steve?
Let me ask you, you're saying we're at eighty-eight thousand off the three fifteen that's listed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're still got a pretty good sized deficit. What, what amount do we as a county contribute to the sheriff's budget each year?
Um, I've got it calculated this year at a local expense at one point, it's one million, two hundred and forty-six thousand.
Good. So, let me ask you, I, I know in some of the conversations, this, uh, sheriff's department being over budget, been an ongoing thing, it's been a history. Um, some of the estimates were two twenty-five one year, maybe that might've been the average, I guess, I don't, I don't know how many years or if you had a chance to.
I'd say it's closer to about a hundred and fifty, I don't know.
Normally, but there was one year it was two twenty-five, correct?
Just like, yeah.
Okay, so, and, and it was, uh, thi- this is kinda where I got a little bit sideways, because I think it was, uh, maybe related or construed that, that the board usually approves that. And I, I don't think myself and my colleagues knew, you know, if it was hidden in the action item or something, I don't, I don't, maybe it was put in a consent agenda and we didn't do our diligence, and I apologize for that, in the past, I'm talking about in the past.
Yeah, no, it's.
And, and then, so when you have a budget amendment, it, it stays in the consent agenda. We, we don't see the, the details, I thought that was why this would be a necessary conversation today.
I don't think there is a consent agenda in the closeout meeting in June.
When we true-up our budget.
Yeah, when we true it up in the past, there isn't a consent agenda. Virtually, because I went back and.
So in, in the past, how has that been rectified in the sheriff's department's overall budget?
Well, it looks just very much like that, is how it looked in that true-up meeting. Because I went back and looked just to make sure I was accurate in what I was, what I thought was happening. So typically, it was done in the closing meeting. And the board approval. Now whether or not the explanation was being over budget, I think historically what's happened though is, um, those adjustments were offset with savings from the care of prisoners and animal control. I didn't have.
I think you've worked in other, other places, other counties, this, it seems like the budget should be adopted, if this is a continuing practice of being off by hundreds of thousands of dollars per year. Is this a common practice in other areas or am I just missing, you know, it doesn't seem like any of our other departments are off to this, uh, extent without a good reason for like the power truck issue. Is it common practice in other localities to be off this much, five to ten percent?
I will say that commonly, um, you do much, more budget adjustments directly. For example, when they get any grants, and we did this, I've been trying to do more of these as we go along. Tourism got that micro business grant. And I asked them to approve the ten thousand of revenue with a ten thousand of expense. So we'll be doing more of these as we go along, but trying to implement that policy as a, as, well, since I started, I'm, I'm able for a little while, I'm starting to catch up a little bit now, especially with the.
Were there any, um, specific purchases, anything that had the, that was most on why, why this went so much over? Is this, or is this just common practice, I guess it probably is?
Don't we talk about, you know, about the reasons, I mean, there, we were provided some, um, reasons for some of the overages.
Do you guys care to share?
But just for the record too, we, I think we invited sheriff to come help us out with that and give funds.
We talked to sheriff about it, said, hey, you know, this, with recent discussions, this is a large number. Um, and he provided us with this, you know, kind of this response on, what he thought. I don't know the twenty dollar overages, I think his, we have, his thought is, he's, he's gonna be about a hundred fifty over. Anyway, he, um.
Does that line up with what your numbers are?
Mine are a little higher.
Yeah, ours are higher than that.
But I think he didn't understand that I factored in some of the, I, uh, issues.
Okay, so he's factored in some things that you've already factored in, okay.
Uniforms were over twelve thousand due to changes in style, uniforms ammunition was over, uh, was ordered during COVID, that was never received, which came in the fiscal, fiscal year, causing a seven thousand overage. Our holding line item was over about sixteen thousand due to replacement outdated tasers. Vehicle maintenance was over thirty-eight K due to aging fleet, fuel was over budget by twenty-six thousand. Uh, purchase of automobiles over about eighteen thousand, increased the cost of vehicles. So those were the thing, some of the things he talked about, the revenue. Uh, and then we discussed about maybe doing quarterly meetings with sheriff's department to try to make sure they're all tracked for next year. Uh, I think that we can improve the processes that have previously taken place. And, um, and, uh, ensure this, that next year we're at a much better situation.
He also mentioned that they had some discretionary funds in courthouse security that could help subcover some of the costs of the overages. That the board is interested in now.
I got a quick fund at a position from this administrative department courthouse, starting off the meeting, so. What happened to that?
I don't know, and, and I'm not even here to defend it, you said, but the ammunition that was ordered should've been budgeted in that budget year and, but, but anyway, I guess that's it.
It was budgeted in that year, it just didn't come in and you can't pay it until you receive it.
This, this might be an ignorant question, but the fuel overages, could that have something to do with just fuel prices? Or is that kind of factored in a certain?
Well, we all suffered from.
Yeah, but the twenty-six thousand you think could probably be explained by fuel costs.
I, I think I would push back on that a little bit, because I believe there was a policy change, to my understanding, about deputies that live outside the county during this budget year, I believe it was, they can drive their vehicle home outside the county. And I believe we do have a number of those deputies. I raised that question. That, I'm, I'm wondering if that could attribute, because I know we have some folks in Smith County, West County, Carroll County.
I was unaware of the policy change. I will say that I think that's become more common practice. And, you know, just because recruitment has been an issue for a lot of forces. I'm seeing that another, like, I was driving the other day down a route and I was like, it was a Pulaski police car in Carroll, and I was like, well, that's weird, you know? But I think that that's just kind of been an industry change.
That actually happened to me, with Grayson County, Garnes, Smith County. Anything else?
I, I appreciate your hard work, appreciate the explanations, you kind of gave it a little bit more, um.
I thank Mr. Anderson, uh, just to your point real quick is, some of the data, as we start to clean up the data entry and as we, you know, start to tighten, some of our processes will have, um, I think this will be a lot better next year for. Uh, I don't know that we'll have some of these problems coming next year, but, um, certainly appreciate your question on this.
Yeah, thanks for, thank you, thank you.
And, and in all honesty, that's why I didn't wanna have a true-up meeting, you know, at the end of the month, because it, I haven't done a true-up meeting in over a decade probably, so. And part of that is because in governmental accounting, bills that come in from July one to August fifteen have to go back to this year. And so from that standpoint, in my mind, is unnecessary, because you're not gonna know truly what your overages are until you book your payables at the end of the year.
And will you give us update on it?
Well, you'll get another one of these, I'm sure, in July and August.
Yep, everybody good? All right, uh, county administrator report, it says none. Uh, we have our information item in the center packet. Uh, we have three, um, people who have signed up for public comment. Joe Monquist, would it be better if I just give you fifteen minutes in the beginning of the meeting?
Yeah, he, he stick with it.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Joe Monquist, yellow and one forty, uh, Kendrick Brown, Martha Wilson. I wanted to speak to the events at the end of the gathering night, county supervisor meeting. During the end, supervisors made a motion to go into closed meeting contrary to code two point two thirty-seven eleven. Regardless of what is printed in the agenda, code twenty-two, two point two thirty-seven eleven says, government body, um, may hold a closed session, but it must also meet the following procedural requirements. The body must affirmatively vote during an open meeting on a motion that identifies the subject matter of the closed meeting, states the purpose of the closed meeting, and makes explicit reference to the statutory exemption applied on the closed meeting. Um, that was not done. Then at the end of the closed meeting, the statute says, the public body must reconvene in a open meeting to take a vote certifying that it discussed only exempt subject matters identified in previous motion. Decisions made in closed meetings do not become official until the public body convenes in an open meeting following proper procedure, reasonably identifies the subjects, substance of the decision, takes a recorded vote on the decision, and return to an closed meeting. And it says that it must be taken and recorded in a, in an open meeting. Now, I don't know if this occurred, because, um, uh, I was not, we were not invited back into the open session. Now, there were at least four public, uh, four of the public that were waiting in the hall, um, at the nearest chairs, y'all were sitting here, we were sitting out there, um, in front of the monitor, waiting to, to see when it got to be opened, um, because the monitor usually films meetings. I didn't know until today that it was only, uh, it's a busy meeting. And we didn't want to listen just right outside the door and then go out cold, so we went to the nearby chairs with the monitor to wait for the meeting to reopen. And, um, and then we were kind of surprised to see when y'all left, and said, oh, the meeting's over. And, um, I understand that when the meeting was reconvened, there was a controversial appointment vote, controversial in that the vote was not unanimous. My purpose of bringing this up is not to focus on what should've been done or shouldn't have been done, but to say that there just needs to be more transparency, um, particularly of controversial matters or appointments, such as that one. And, uh, that everyone's a glorifying the public, whenever there's a closed session or when it's reopened, that will come back to us reopening.
Kathy Cole?
I withdraw my request.
Good. The empty bottom question?
Angie Donahue, whiskey, one forty, Kendrick, Martha Wilson. And, um, I just am gonna, for the record, I, you know, I've talked to Glenn, which has been very helpful in telling me where to find things. I've talked to you and you've been helpful in telling me we're getting a new website, I appreciate all of that. But in the meantime, it's very difficult, as the people who were in the first meeting at five o'clock also said. So I know I'm not the only one who's struggling with this, I know I'm not the only little old lady in Mason County who doesn't do Facebook. And I just wanted to state also that when you put things on Facebook, that's great, because that's where most people go. But the more you populate the page, the notices get pushed down and you don't get to see them. So that's a problem, and it just seems like it would be so simple to put the notices on the front page, because that's where you expect to see them. When you see them in the newspaper or on Facebook, it's called a notice, and there is something on the front page of the government website that says that that's where announcements and notices go. It's very inconsistent with meetings, and I know the code two point two three seven oh seven does talk about public bodies. All their meetings have to be posted on the government website. It's very explicit in the definitions as to, I think everything would be covered. And so I just would really appreciate your attention in that, and I'll keep speaking until it happens, thank you.
That's all of our public comment, uh, no more to supervisor's time?
We need a motion to approve, where to put that up in the agenda.
Because it would, we pulled it out of the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments. Say, that motion will say in the discussion.
I just appreciate the explanation, sometimes we're just, if we see numbers and things and we start drawing our own conclusions, so it's good to have the, you know, some bolts to work, what's going on, so thank you.
Okay, we got a motion to say, no further discussion, all those in favor, say if I'm saying I. Anybody who wants more supervisor's time? Okay, with that, I would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to say, all those in favor, say if I'm saying I. Also, I, maybe adjourn.